All right.
Right on time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Select Board's called to order November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P. M. First thing of business is the meeting minutes for October twenty-sixth. Hey, Mike, are you on the air?
I am.
Okay, great.
And so I'd like to move the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, have a second. First and second all in favor.
Can I will not say.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mike says aye.
Three zero one.
Three zero one. Okay. Public forum, this is anybody, an opportunity to give anyone who wants to address the Board of Selectmen with any issue that is not on the agenda tonight.
Hi.
Hi, Tracy.
Tracy O'Rourke, Town Clerk. I just wanted to read the results from the election on Tuesday, so everyone knows. It is also posted on the website. So for the town, special town meeting, question one, which was the comp plan updates, yes votes were one thousand two hundred twenty-six, no votes were three hundred thirty-one. Question two, which was the street opening ordinance, yes was one thousand three hundred sixty-one, and no was two twenty-nine. Question three, for a new town hall, yes was seven fifty-eight, and no was eight eighty-six. Question four, which was sale of the school street property, which was directly tied to question three, so this won't go anywhere, but the yes votes were eight twenty-five, and the no votes were eight hundred. The question five for Cape Porpoise Peer Funding, yes, one thousand four hundred seventy-eight, and no was one fifty-three. And question six, the easement with Green Marine, was yes, one thousand three hundred eighty-five, no, two oh seven. And the final question seven, to accept the Cape Porpoise Fire Station, yes, one thousand five hundred forty-nine, and no was eighty-two. And then for the state election results, I'll just read whether they passed or not rather than the votes. Question one, which was a citizens initiative, did pass. Question two, citizens initiative, did pass. Question three, which was citizens initiative, that was the pine tree power, that did not pass. Question four, which was another citizens initiative, did. Question five was the constitutional amendment, and that did pass. Question six, constitutional amendment, did pass. Question seven, which was another constitutional amendment, did not pass. And question eight, which was a constitutional amendment, did not pass in town. So those are the results of the election. And then I have another exciting piece of news that I'd like to share. We had the Boston Post cane nomination process over the past couple months. So for those who aren't familiar, the Boston Post cane tradition was established in nineteen oh nine by Edwin Grozer, editor and publisher of the Boston Post newspaper. On August second, nineteen oh nine, in letters sent to seven hundred boards of selectmen in towns of Maine, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island, Grozier asked them to be trustees of seven hundred ebony gold-topped canes that he had contracted to be made during the previous year. A special cane was then presented to the governing authority in four hundred and thirty-one towns in New England who responded to the letter. And those canes were to be presented as an honor to each town's oldest resident. The recipient held the honor as long as he or she lived within the town boundaries. So we did hold a nomination process, and the qualified recipients were, or nominees were reviewed, and they had to be at least ninety years old and had to have lived in Kennebunkport full-time for at least twenty years. So Allison Kenway nominated Lillian Bartlett, who is ninety-eight years young, and she lives on Town Street, and she was picked as the oldest resident. And so we're going to do a presentation to her the week of Thanksgiving. She's inviting her children. We're going to have the Select Board, anyone who's available, come and help us present to her. So that's very, very exciting news. And Allison called her today and told her, and she was very excited. She said she was hoping that one day she would qualify for it. So, yeah, so that's.
Reasonable hope.
Yes. So that's a little bit of good news in this world. And also, I just wanted to say from all of the employees how much we appreciate Yanina and what she has done over the past month. She has really stepped up. She's supported all of us, and we've tried to support her as best we can. But she did a phenomenal job from our point of view. So thank you, Yanina. You are the best. Aw, thank you.
And I'm quite sure we all feel the same way.
Thank you.
I just, I just want, before we move on, I just want to say a couple things about the town hall vote. First of all, I know that we've heard you guys loud and clear out there, and we're going to kind of regroup. Hopefully, we'll be able to take some of your ideas, put them to use, put them together, and listen more closely, and hopefully, we'll come up with a better plan. I don't know whether it would be a better plan, but a plan that the town will like, that hopefully, everybody will like. And I believe that everybody really believes that we do need a new town hall. So with that being said, we're going to try to hopefully get it, get it on the June ballot.
Go to Plan B.
Plan B, good.
Go to Plan B.
So thank you very much. Moving on. Shelfish license allocation for two thousand and twenty-four. So this is how it goes. Two resident commercial licenses, twenty-five recreational senior licenses at no charge, fifty-five recreational resident license, ten non-resident licenses, three non-resident senior licenses, no charge, and one recreational license, no charge. It's the same, this is the same amount of people that we had last year, and the committee decided that this is what they want to do this year, so I take a motion.
Motion to accept the shelfish committee's proposal for this year.
Second.
The first and second all in favor. How about you, Mike?
Yeah, aye.
So four.
Four zero, okay. Six, consider ordinance from the Shade Tree Committee. I believe they're going to withdraw that, but I think that they would like to come up and talk a little bit about what's ahead of us.
Yeah, so, well, I think Tricia and Karen and John, John Ripton would like to give an update to the board and possibly maybe get some, a little feedback. So this is not a done ordinance yet. They will just give an update here if you have any feedback to say, and then they will come back at a later point and see how it will go.
Yeah.
Yes, we've been, you know, we've been on the Shade Tree Committee, very concerned that there is no, presently, there is no tree ordinance in town, and we thought that it would be important for us to, to look into that, to do the research, and to see what, what, what other towns are actually, have, what they've enacted, what ordinances exist out there. At this point, however, we're not completely finished with the, with the research that we were doing. I mean, we, we wanted to get this in quickly, and we moved perhaps a little bit too quickly. And as a result, you know, we're here to basically explain that to you and answer any questions you may have at this point. If, if there are any that you have regarding, regarding the tree and the tree ordinance that we're suggesting needs to ultimately be considered. So if there are questions you have now, we can certainly, we can certainly entertain
Does the Board have any questions?
I'm looking forward to, to the complete ordinance when it's, when it's prepared.
How about, how about you, Mike?
I've got a couple of questions. I'd like, I'm sure John can answer. First of all, I don't, I don't disagree that we probably need a tree ordinance, but I do have some issues with the process of, of determining what legacy property, what legacy trees are on private property. I also have a lot of, I, I think we need to smooth out, or at least understand what we mean about a tree easement to, because we don't have tree easements now, and that we're talking about a, a repair, or, 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 you know, to protect public ways and so forth from trees that are on private property, and trees, tree easements and so forth. And I'm not sure that I really understand how those could work. So I, I think, John, that I'd like to just, and I'm not against anything, I'm just saying that these would be questions that I would have, that I would think we would have to have some legal people look at, because to me, it's getting a little bit more invasive on prop, on private rights.
Yes, there's, there's no doubt that there will be some consideration of how we deal with private rights in this. One of the reasons that we are, we want to take some more time to look at this is to research how other towns have been doing it from California to the East Coast, and just in here in Maine as well, just to give us a lot more perspective on it, to give a greater depth of analysis related to this, and to bring before the, before the, the Board a really fully fledged proposal that, that has taken into consideration the things that, is it, Mike, that you, that you just raised. Those are among the things that we're concerned about and that we want to do further research on.
All right. Yeah, I might, I might suggest that next time you consider circulating something before it comes to the night of the, of, or the week of the vote even.
Yeah.
To get maybe some, some feedback, if there's some major directions that would be of concern, as, as we talked about, what's a tag tree, what's not a tag tree, how do you remove, so, removal piece, so, yeah.
Yeah, all of that is actually in flux right now.
Yeah.
I mean, we, you know, we ultimately have to determine what these, these are, tag trees and not tag trees, and what do they mean in relation to a tree ordinance and, you know, and all of that.
Good.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to our Shade Tree Committee, because they're actually doing a wonderful job in, in this town.
They do.
We have, as you know, we are Tree City USA for many years. It's because of Shade Tree Committee, they submit the application for us, and they do a lot of volunteering work, and they work with the community. So as Mike commented, and you commented, we definitely can look into shade, you know, into the ordinance, and I hope you guys will take feedback from, from the Board, and we'll meeting the needle on this.
Yeah, and, and I should say, since you brought, you were mentioning the Shade Tree Committee, I think Tricia's, has been primarily the person that's taken the initiative on this, and so we've, we're sort of following her lead now, and we're all pitching in now more than we did before, to make sure that we have, you know, a full girth around it, yeah.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your volunteerism.
Yes.
Okay, item seven, Parks and Recreation Master Plan Presentation. Hi, Stephanie.
Good evening. As you know, we've been working on our master plan for our parks for about a year now. The process started back in October, when we first met with Jessica and her team from Viewshed, which was TJ DNA when we first contracted with them. So we've been working on this for that long, and we've got a final presentation for you tonight. I know you just received the report recently, and there's a lot to digest in there, but we will, after her presentation, and she'll go through a lot of the processes on how we went through the year, and getting public feedback, and feedback from the community. So she'll go through all of that, but we'll take questions then at the end. But then, after you've had time to read that full report, I'll be back at the next meeting to answer more questions. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Jessica Kimball. She's a landscape architect with Viewshed, and she has the presentation for you tonight.
Thank you.
The presentation is behind the board.
Yeah, feel free to look back behind you instead of looking at me, because that's where the interesting stuff is. Thanks for the introduction, Stephanie, and thanks for having me here tonight. Is there a way for me to be in control of the slides?
No, just tell me next page.
Okay. I suppose let's move on to the next slide. So before I begin getting into the contents of the plan, I wanted to just acknowledge the amount of work that went into this by members of the town staff and also the community. So this is just a list of participating stakeholders who helped guide the project, the bottom line being participating members of the public is last but certainly not least. Next slide, please. So this is the plan purpose, and I'll just read it, because it kind of describes what the intent of the work was. So the, the plan will, and should, provide the town with a strategy for improving and maintaining public parks and recreational facilities over the next decade. The guidance and design strategies presented in the plan are the first step in a thoughtful and strategic investment in the public park system. So really, this is the first step to implementation. Next slide. So the planned contents, I know you just received it tonight, but to give you kind of like the Cliffs Notes of what's included in there, we have chapters on inventory, that's what the town has, assessment, that's an indication of how we should be moving forward based on what we have, a section on guiding principles to sort of guide the direction of the design recommendations. Then the meat of the plan really is in the park concept design work that we did for each of the four public parks, Firefighters Park, Parsons Field, Rotary Park at Beechwood, and Silas Perkins Park, and then the last chapter is on implementation. Next slide. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the public engagement process, just so you have a baseline understanding of what we did. So there were four pillars of public engagement. The first was an interactive website, and this was basically a presentation of what we have, what does the landscape look like in town currently? It has had over eighteen hundred views over the last year. We then used that website along with a postcard out to residents with access to a digital survey. So a survey went out, we had four hundred and thirty respondents. We asked questions around park use, benefits of public parks, what would the priorities be for future investments? We really focused down the four public parks, wanting to know what people had to say about those individual sites. And then, next slide, please. We then met with individual stakeholders from the Recreation Committee, a committee of volunteer citizens that work with Stephanie. We met with the school, we met with the Conservation Trust, Little League, Tommy McNamara Foundation, and an ADA specialist, just to name a few. Those were Zoom meetings that Stephanie and I, Stephanie and I had with stakeholders. And then our fourth point of public engagement was, next slide, please, the public meeting that we had in April. So approximately thirty people attended this meeting over at the Recreation Building, and this was an in-person meeting in which we presented the results from the community survey. We then presented concept designs for Parsons Field and Firefighters Park. We provided three design concepts for each park. Then we asked participants to vote for their favorite concept out of the three schemes at each, listened to feedback, and then went back to the drawing board to get to the designs that you'll be seeing this evening. Next slide, please. So inventory and assessment, I'm not going to go into all of the details of the inventory and assessment here in this presentation, but basically, the intent of this was to look at what does the community have? How does the community compare to similar communities across the country in terms of, does it have enough basketball courts, or pickleball courts, or whatever the amenity might be? What does the community really want, and then where should we direct investment? So we did this work through engagement and looking at what we had before we got into the design work. Next slide. So just to quickly touch on the inventory component, there are sort of two parts of the public open space system. The first is the conservation land and trails, which are managed primarily by the KCT. We have the privilege of having over thirty-two hundred acres of land in conservation, which accounts for about a quarter of the town land area, and this includes twenty-seven miles of trails, in addition to the conservation and trail infrastructure that we have. Of course, we have the beaches and the water access amenities. So that is one part of the access to parks and recreation, but those are not managed by the town in the same way that our four public parks are managed by the town. So next slide. Our four parks, I'm not going to go through the details here, but we've kind of looked at exactly what the existing conditions were, what amenities existed, establishing a baseline understanding of each of these four sites and what they had to offer. Next slide. So this is a very brief summary on kind of the, the assessment based on the community feedback. So what did we learn from the inventory assessment, public engagement process before getting into the design work? So the first is passive recreation was major. It's what most people are doing, from walking, jogging, gathering in our, in our public parks, and wanting investment in that type of infrastructure. The most requested amenities, you can see there on the screen, water access points was the first, but this was before the implementation of the recent boat launch, so that may have looked different today if we had done it. There was an emphasis on ADA accessibility, outdoor event spaces, community gardens. Pickleball came up in everything. It was there in the survey, it was there at the public meeting, it was there with stakeholders. We actually met with the pickleball instructor, who was one of our stakeholders. So we knew that pickleball was like the major thing that, from a active recreation standpoint, that was missing from our community. So that's, you'll see that in the plans tonight. And then just a general summary on where to, where the most support for investment was, people were generally interested in expanding trails and connectivity between open spaces, expanding water access, again, before the new boat launch was recently approved. And people were most interested in improving and enhancing our current park spaces as opposed to building more parks. So that's a brief summary and a jumping off point. Next slide, please. So based on that, we established four guiding principles that we constantly went back to in thinking about the design and approach to each of these parks. So the first is that we are investing in our existing parks, as I mentioned. We're not looking to expand our recreational facilities, but work within the land that we have, while at the same time noting that we should continue to support, to support the work of the Conservation Trust and what they do. The second is to strike a balance, and this applies to finding a balance between competing interests that are often present in our park spaces. So for example, ecological restoration balanced with recreational opportunities, or opportunity for active sports in balance with opportunity for passive recreation or contemplation, prioritizing the needs of the youth in the community along with the older population. So we're always trying to find this balance. Emphasis on accessibility, and this came up quite frequently in work with stakeholders and with the community, making sure that unstable surfaces, steep slopes, and steps in the landscape were redesigned to accommodate all levels of mobility, and so you'll see that in our design work. And then the fourth one is to acknowledge context. Each of these four parks is cited differently in the landscape, in relation to the coastline, environmental sensitivities, adjacent land uses, and so we're always acknowledging context. So those are the four guiding principles that we were frequently thinking about in the design work. And what I'm going to get into now is the fun stuff, which is the concept plans for each of these four parks. Primarily, the three big parks received concept plans. Silas Perkins Park kind of has just general recommended approaches, because it's quite small and limited. So as we're going through each of these, I just want to note that this, it really is the first step in the design process that outlines the opportunity for phasing and future investment. And I'll talk about each park, and I can break, and we can have questions after each one, so you don't have to wait till the very end if that works.
Sure.
Cool. So next slide, please. So Firefighters Park. These are just images of the existing conditions. I won't go into the details around the existing conditions, but it really is an open field with a T-ball field, a very beloved play structure, and it has a great location with views of the marshlands looking out towards Cape Porpois. Next slide. So as part of our work at this park, we actually took a step further than we did at the other parks, and that was to have a full wetland delineation and natural resource survey done, because we wanted to understand what the limitations were on the site. So you can see the yellow band is the, is the, the title, the saltwater coastal wetland, and then the green is forested wetlands that kind of come up and wrap around the site. So the area that is currently open with the parking and the T-ball field kind of reflects the limitation of where we can really develop in, in whole. Next slide, please. So this is the concept plan that landed in the final report. To introduce it, basically, the first thing that we did was take the T-ball field and move it to a different location. The emphasis at this park is to provide access to the coastal landscape that you don't necessarily notice or see today. You have to walk across the field to get there. You don't know it's there. So we want to establish accessible walking trails and nature trails to bring users out to capture the view of that marshland. We wanted to maintain that open field that currently exists today, but we broke it up into a larger central lawn and a smaller contemplative marshside lawn that would ideally have views out to the marshland by limbing up the vegetation along the shoreline. And then we wanted to emphasize the importance of play. I know from spending time there with my children, they love the little red fire truck, and we received a lot of comments from people in this, in the Cape Porpois neighborhood of wanting to take, of have a place to take their grandkids to, to go and play. So we sort of leaned into that and emphasized play. Next slide. So this is a slide with just a few present imagery points of what we mean by play. So this is Firefighters Park. I think staying with the firefighter theme and leaning into that and building out around that wood fire truck that's there is a, a nice approach, also because of this proximity to the natural resources, incorporating some sort of natural play area along the, the wood line. And then the image at the top is just an example of how a play structure doesn't need to look like a traditional play structure. They can take on very creative shapes and forms. And so we see this as being a, potentially, a very imaginative play space to attract kids to come play. Next slide. These images are just to further express what's shown on the plan. So there's the central lawn, the image above is actually from Coastal Maine Botanical Gardens, so an open lawn space surrounded by planting beds. The planting beds may have an ecological component, since it's located so close to the coastline, made up of native plantings. The overlook would be a wood boardwalk that would come out to a viewing platform over the marsh, and then that's just an image of a trail to show what we mean when we say nature trail. And I think that's the last slide, yeah, that, before we move into Parsons Field, is there any questions that you'd like to ask about Firefighters Park? Okay.
Michael, how about you?
Mike?
Mike, are you out there?
I had you, I had you, I was muted. Yeah, I got a couple of things about Fireman's Park. I spent some time out there doing a little bit of work, and, and there, there is a lot of people who use the park, a lot of dog lovers use the park, but there are a lot of family, you know, I even observed people out there putting a blanket down, having a picnic and so forth, and a lot of kids, a few, I'd say a lot, some kids are playing basketball there, and I, I think it's an ideal place. The only problem is, we have so many mosquitoes and, out there, it's really a mosquito-y place. I don't know how, if there's anything we can do about that, but I, I think anything that we can do out there, just having the fire truck there is not enough. I think we need to have some kind of a playground there.
Yeah. So there's a, a page in the report that references the mosquito problem, and we have a few different recommendations for ways to, to address that.
I saw that, I saw that, yeah. And that's why I brought it up again, because from my own experience, I know that they liked me very much when I was out there, so.
Well, Mike, you did so much work on that fire truck, and so many kids are using it, they're loving it.
Yeah, I, I, I'm happy about that, because my wife and I were out there the other day, get, just to get the mail, and, and that's a little bit of a downside, the mail thing, because of the traffic that goes in there, but, but the, there were a number of kids on the fire truck, and they were having a lot of fun. And the Parks and Rec this year painted it. I, I just couldn't do it again this year, and it's hard for me now to squeeze into small places, and it's even harder for me to get up. So it's, 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 it was really nice to have the Parks and Rec Department take over the painting of it, and it's, it's, it's well-loved and well-used.
And it's still in the plan, if you look at the red, the little, like, red, do you see it? So it's there, front and center, right? When you pull in, it's the first thing you see, and then everything else is built around it, so.
Where, where's, where's the astronomical high tide coming in? Does it get to the walkway?
Ooh, that's a really good question, and we don't have that on here, and I don't, go back to the, go back a couple of slides to the Wetlands Report, I don't know if it would have it or not.
It wasn't clear whether that would be orange, or I, I don't know if that was.
It's, it's coming up into the, I mean, and that's just the coastal wetland, so I don't have it on here as a, a reference point.
Okay, that's fair.
But we can certainly add it.
Stephanie will come back in December, so that's one of the questions that we can address.
It'd be important where you put the walkway, you know, just for maintenance of it.
Yes, and the height of the walkway. So this is the.
Well, not the walkway, the trail.
Oh.
Just for maintenance of the trail, so.
Right, right.
It looks like it's a little close, that was my concern.
Right. It's conceptual.
Right.
Step one. So we'll move on to Parsons Field then. So Parsons Field, these are some images of the existing conditions. We have a softball field there, multipurpose field. There's a big chain link fence that runs along the side of it separating the fields from the school. We have a playground, of course, the rec department. And then, community events have really sort of taken hold of this site in the summertime. There's a couple of images there just to kind of show the use of this field space and how successful it's been. Next slide, I believe. So this is the concept plan for Parsons Field. The intent is to continue to make this a central community park and recreational hub. It is the new home of the T-ball field. So you can see that in the bottom right-hand corner. That's the T-ball field taken from Firefighters Park and put over here. It is actively used by the, the Little League, so we wanted to keep it. But it made sense to put it where there was an active field space away from the coast and the mosquitoes. The softball field remains unchanged. The only real upgrade to the field space that we're recommending, other than the installation of the T-ball field, is that the drainage problems in the field space are corrected. The, it doesn't drain properly when it rains, it creates large pondings. So before investment in the field, it would be good to improve the subsurface so that it drains properly. So it doesn't look exciting on the plan, but major improvements to the actual field surface. The addition of an ADA walkway is proposed to wrap around the, the perimeter of the field. When older adults come to use the recreation building for programming, it's nice to have an accessible walking path where they can, can walk and use that as a passive recreational amenity. The rec department hosts their summer camp here, and that's probably the biggest user of Parsons Field. And so we wanted to make sure that there were enhancements to the play space. And so we've kind of expanded that, keeping it in the same location, just sort of blooming, ballooning it out a little bit. And I think on the next pay, on the next slide, skip ahead one, we'll come back to this one since we're talking about play. Just some imagery around play here that might be associated with what happens in this expansion. I know shade is a problem in the summertime for the camp kids. Of course, we have trees that we can plant around it. But the image in the upper left shows a playground that has posts that receive seasonal sales as a nice way to generate shade around an existing play structure and then they can come down in the winter. Just other creative play surfaces, again, thinking outside the box of what play is and inspiring thinking around that. Go back one slide. We have, there's the ADA walking trail, just an example of what we're talking about. It could be asphalt or concrete. And then the additional parking that we are proposing for the field is actually on the parcel adjacent to the field space where people currently park. So the image in the upper left are cars parking today. And so it would just be formalizing that, making it so that there was a true access. And then in the future, if this were kept and eventually developed as something, that could just serve as the access road to whatever development would happen on that adjacent parcel. Any questions about Parsons Field?
No.
Mike?
No, I'm good. I'm excited about it. It's good.
So I do have one question. So the service road that we use now.
The tote road, like that's the, you mean, go back to the plan.
Between the school and the, and the.
Yeah, go back.
So over by, from off the school street, exit going over past the school, that little, where all the little trees are and stuff now, where people do park there?
Yeah, on the plan, right?
On the softball field.
Yep.
No, not there. What were you talking about?
Or on the other side.
On the other side, I mean, where they, they park all the cars there when they play softball?
Yes.
You know what I mean?
I know exactly what you mean. Yep. So that is the, if you look at the plan, on the right-hand side of the plan, there's the, and if you look behind you, it's much bigger, you can read it maybe a bit easier. But the, that area that's shown as a striped parking lot on the right hand, exactly, thank you. Exactly, that's where softball players or parents going to a T-ball practice would pull in now and just park on the lawn. And so it's just formalizing it as a, as a true parking area. Ideally, so when people are parking that close to the trees, they're compressing the roots of the trees and over time, it's just not good for the, the larger trees that are there. So designing it in a way to kind of pull back from the trees and, and account for that would help protect some of the vegetation that's over there.
Those trees do stop softballs from hitting your cars.
Yeah, right. We shouldn't take out the trees. We should just put the parking behind the trees.
Right, yeah.
And use that right-of-way. So I think most people are not actually, where, where the tote road is, is not as far over as where this access is shown, so it's pulling everything a little further from the trees. But that same area, yeah, just using it.
Thank you.
An earlier design had pickleball courts here.
It did, but you're going to be excited when you see what's happening at Rotary Park. Or maybe not, it depends how much you like pickleball.
Ask the tennis players that.
Well, let's move on to Rotary Park and we can talk about the, the racket sports. So this is the most densely compacted of the, all of the park spaces. We have everything over at Rotary Park. Basketball courts, tennis courts, shared with pickleball courts. We have a great play area, it's the only swings, aside from the swings that are at KCS. And we have some grade changes that have been designed around with railroad ties. So lots of wood in the landscape. You can see the steps there in the middle image. Not a forever solution, I think, but those are the existing conditions. So the next slide, please. This shows the existing conditions. So what we, we have the parking area, there is a KCT trailhead, there's the basketball, the play, and then the shared tennis court. So there are two tennis courts and four pickleball courts striped on top of those right now. So the first item to tackle is the additional pickleball courts. And we have a couple of different options for restriping and potential expansion. So go to the next slide, and I'm going to have you go back and forth frequently between these two slides. So the first and least expensive approach to adding more pickleball courts is to take what is currently striped as four pickleball courts and make it six pickleball courts, which is feasible. It will fit in the existing court space. We just need to remove the stripes that are there and re-stripe.
Define fit. You're not gonna, you're gonna have those off, they're close together now. How are you, you gonna put six in there where there's four now?
Correct. They're not close together in comparison to the tennis courts. The, the linear footage required for six pickleball courts does legally exist in the court space that is there. And I can get the report to get the exact measurement for you, but.
With the outside space as well.
Exactly. So you, so you need to have space, so the, the pickleball court that doesn't currently work is there's actually a pickleball court, I think striped on the basketball courts, and that doesn't have enough space around it. But it is legal, it could be done.
But what about safety?
Yeah, it's legal, but a ball goes over and somebody falls on it. I mean, it's, it's all right, it's, it's.
Okay.
Yeah.
According to the regulations around pickleball and how much square footage is required around the court space, it is feasible to put six courts where there's currently two pickleball, excuse me, two tennis courts. But if you wanted to have additional space where there wasn't a shared court situation so that people could play tennis and pickleball and basketball at the same time, we are showing an expansion to what is planned left or to the north is up, so to the west, exactly two additional courts over there. So that is space that doesn't currently exist. So if you go back and forth between the two slides, so those are the four courts now, and then that space right there would be the expansion space exactly over into the left. So we could have.
But you got those two pickleball courts pushed up right against the fence. Am I missing that?
Yeah.
Isn't that the fence?
Oh, yeah, we would have to have that be a little bit wider.
That's a little.
Still feasible. That is, yeah, we can make that edit. So it should come over an additional, I don't know how many feet around the edge of a pickleball court. I don't have the measurements in front of me. So, yeah, we should adjust the plan to bring that over more than where it currently is or the fence line could, could shift over to the right.
Well, it could redo the whole area to, again, it's conceptual.
Completely conceptual.
Let's leave it at conceptual.
Completely. The idea is that we have enough to have two tennis courts and some additional pickleball courts here. We can also re-stripe the basketball court to have a shared space. If basketball is used less frequently than tennis, then that would be the place to have your pickleball space.
Why are we squeezing every pickleball, all this pickleball? What happened to the ones at, at Parsons Field? We could have had four to six to eight there.
There were, were concerns over the deed restrictions at Parsons Field that may, might be a limitation on anything other than field space. So, John?
That's a might.
It is a might.
All righty.
Yeah, so we, we greatly appreciate, as you know, Parsons Field, there is a deed with Parsons Field, and we respect the deed and we respect the family. So Stephanie had a few meetings with Louise Peng, whose family, I don't know, donated, I guess, the field to the town. So we just want to be respectful to, to, to the wishes of the deed and we just, the family wants to keep it as it is for, for the time being. So we're just working with them, again, being very thankful for the, for their, for their time and for this donation. And we just, that's, that's why you see it this way.
Okay. In addition to the deed restrictions that put the courts here, I think leaning into a singular site for all of your court amenities would allow us to have shared bathroom facilities, potentially shared shade structure, bringing them together as sort of the community court space and defining this park as, that is the focus versus Parsons Field where the focus is field sports, this is the court sports. So it was consolidating amenities of like-kind. In addition to the pickleball courts, we have some, some shade structures. I know to, while you're waiting for a court or between, between plays, to have a shade structure attached to the court space. That's the, the shade structure shown just to the north. And then we have another pavilion located between the basketball court and the pickleball and tennis courts as a place to provide refuge for parents watching their kids on the playground and also for people who are there using the sports. And then we have an expanded playground because we took the opportunity to expand the play where we had the chance. The, the playground that is currently there is an older kid playground. It's, it's small and kind of made for, it, it's a difficult for young kids to kind of climb through it, just the way the design is. So trying to make the playground more inclusive to a variety of age groups. And with that enhancement of play, making sure that there's a safe fence between Beachwood Avenue and the play area so that kids aren't running into the road. And that's another problem that currently exists today. There's really no barrier to keep kids from going out into the, the roadway. Next slide, please. So Silas Perkins Park, this is another park that has some, first of all, it's a beautiful pocket park right on the Kennebunk River. There are currently granite steps, you'll see in the bottom right-hand image, that allow access down to the water or the mud flats depending on the tide. So it is a water access point. There are currently furnishings on site that allow people to come and sit and enjoy the view. There's a pub station located immediately adjacent to it on a separate parcel. This site obviously has environmental restrictions associated with it because of its proximity to a natural resource. It also has deed restrictions associated with it that don't allow structures to be constructed on-site. So there really isn't much that we can do with the park space. It's currently a lawn, it will stay a lawn. If you go to the next slide, please. So there's a planned view of the park, so you can see where it's located between the Yachtsman and the Rundle Yacht Club. So the recommendations for the park, well, we don't have a concept plan like the other parks. We have the recommendation to utilize the stairs as a, as a launch point, a river access point. In order to do that, we need to have some kind of parking, some kind of loading, a place where you would be able to park your car, unload your kayak, and, and get to the river, even if you were to go and park elsewhere in the neighborhood more permanently. There is enough room between the edge of the park and where the Ocean Ave streetscape currently exists where there is potential to make enhancements to generate parking spaces. So no design for that specifically, but a suggestion that that be explored by the town. In addition, the crosswalk that is at the park is shown in the bottom, the bottom left. It goes from Green Street across and directs pedestrians right into a pump station and where there is no sidewalk. So as we think about streetscape improvements, thinking about enhancement of a crosswalk, perhaps the crosswalk gets moved up down Ocean Avenue so that the crosswalk actually ends at the entrance to the park, so it pulls people from downtown into the park space. So no concept plan, but suggestions in the report around that. And then, of course, I'm making sure that there are seasonal furnishings for people to come and take in the view. Next slide. Okay, final two slides here, just to touch on implementation. So in order for the plan to be implemented, I think there are a few points that we wanted to include in the report. The first is to accept the plan, and I don't know what that formal process looks like, but I don't know if, if the select board would actually accept the plan as a formal document, or if it would be referenced in future documents, future comprehensive plans drawing back to this as a reference point. The next item is making sure that there is appropriate staff support for the maintenance and the improvements so that the, the departments that are responsible for managing the work have the capacity to do so. I'll talk about prioritizing improvements on the next slide. And then the last one is funding, and that's, of course, really important to fund the improvements to the park. So we have these ideas, how are they phased out over time? And then how are they supported with funding sources? So something to consider. So this last slide here, what we've done is we've taken the design concepts and strategies at each of the four parks and we've ranked them as the high priority points, the medium priority points, and the low priority points. So the low-hanging fruit, or the easier things to do, or maybe the more important things to do, for example, removing the T-ball field from, from Firefighters Park to get it over to Parsons Field is a high priority because that's kind of an easy move to make by moving that over. Lower priority items tend to be the bigger cost items, you know, the marsh overlook or improving the drainage at Parsons Field, constructing the, the shade structures over at, at Rotary Park. So we've outlined some guidance on the way that the phasing could occur. Of course, it's all as funding allows, it's where the town decides to direct investment, what Stephanie has the capacity to, to, to do. So this is just a guide, a reference point. I expect it will probably change based on factors. And then the last column is a summary of the cost estimates that we did for each of these. And a very detailed cost estimation is provided within the report, and these are just the final big numbers associated with them. You'll notice that they have quite a bit of range associated with them, and that's because there's a lot of design work to do, value engineering to do. And so it's just giving the town some guidance on what to expect if full build-out were to occur at these sites. And that is the last slide. Questions and answers?
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was lovely.
Thank you very much.
Does the board have, Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, I just, I just would mention one thing about, I love T-ball, I think it's a great, great program. But if you get over to Fireman's Park some, some weekend when they're, when they're over there with T-ball, the parking is really, really difficult because there are more cars, I mean, it's, it's just packed with cars. And I would just be concerned of a little, I'm not concerned, just something to think about. And that would be that we have a lot of soccer there on set on weekends. And so there's a lot of, the fields are taken over by soccer and lacrosse and whatever, field hockey, whatever we're doing. And I just, once, we need to consider with T-ball being there, boy, there's a lot of parking, a lot of cars. So it's just something to think about. So it's just something to think about. But I think the whole thing is great. It just, it's, all it takes is money, you know? We'll just have to take a look at it all, you know?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, item number nine, adoption of the budget development schedule for. Oh, excuse me, I skipped. Sorry, Eric. Item eight, pier causeway update.
Thank you. I just want to give you a quick update on the pier road project. So Sargent Corporation has been, was awarded the project. We've signed contracts with them. They're underway. They're, they're moving ahead with the block design. So there's, as you're aware, there's a fair amount of wall design associated with this as we're raising the road. And we're trying to stay within that footprint. So they, they begun that, that block design within the right-of-way. So we're anticipating that block delivery would be done sometime in February of 2024. That's how long it will take to actually manufacture the materials. They need to be out of there pretty quickly after that. So, or at least they need to be out of the wet area by April, early April. So that will happen. They continue to work upward after that, once they're out of the, the wet areas, if you will. Any, we are still in negotiations with a couple of residents there. Any work on, in those areas is basically is not in the design right now at this time until we get some agreement with them to be able to do work on their property. It's not stopping us from doing our work at this point. So we are gonna go ahead with the project right now as is.
Say more about the wet. I don't, you said you had to be.
Yeah, so the, basically, below sea level, effectively. So when I say the wet, I mean areas that would be wet.
So you wanna have enough, you wanna have the structure raised above the high tide line by April?
That's correct. Right, so.
Is that a state requirement?
Yes, federal requirement for us. It's part of our permits. So what we'd anticipate right now is that we would, we'd be doing the preliminary paving sometime probably in May of 2024. So probably that road will be back and paved. It will look normal, if you will, like a normal road. The final paving will come back in '25. May 2025, we will come back and put another surface layer on top of that. So just to be aware that, well, I'll keep you abreast of course of the scheduling moving forward. I don't have a schedule right yet. We haven't done a pre-construction meeting yet. But because of the sensitivity of the block being, that's, that's in play. That started. Soon we'll have a pre-construction meeting. We'll be sitting down. They'll, they'll provide us scheduling. I'll, I'll have better, better dates for you folks at that point as to what kind of impacts will happen throughout the winter. Just, just want the people, everyone to be aware that there's probably, the traffic will be open for, for the duration of the project. However, just, you can anticipate some delays sometimes because it is gonna be oscillating traffic as they'll have just flaggers on each end or possibly signals. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, item nine, adoption of the budget development schedule from July 2024 through June 2025. Did you want something to say about that?
Sure, I'll just, I will make a few notes about this. So the, I met with the finance director, Nicole Evangelista, and we developed the schedule. It will not look any different than any year before this, except here's what I found out. Lucky me, this is, 2024 will be a leap year. So I was, one of the staff members pointed out, I've made a mistake. So February 29 date, February 29, 2024. So that actually will, that date turns into March 7, 2024. So there's not gonna be meeting on February 29, 2024. It just turns into March. So staff member pointed out that the whole March is taken.
Right, every week.
Yeah, but again, it's because it's leap year, and I didn't realize that. So that's the only comment I wanna make. We are, we started as of October 2nd, sending out applications to social services agencies. And we're on point number two, which is the first meeting today. And if the board is okay with my amendment, or if has, if the board has any other comments.
No, it looks good.
Motion?
Motion to accept.
Oh, wait, Mike may, it sounds like.
Mike?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm good.
Oh, good.
Can't wait, can't wait.
Here we go again.
I didn't hear him.
He said he can't wait.
Oh, can't wait. Oh, okay.
Motion to accept.
I was second.
I have a first and a second. Mike?
Aye.
And the other two? So it was four of us? Four to zero.
Four to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 10, discussion of November and December Board of Selectmen meeting dates. Holidays. Do you guys wanna do the same thing we've done in the past? I think in December, we kept the dates, but in November, I think that, didn't we change it?
Yeah, we, we met at nine o'clock in the morning, the week of Thanksgiving.
Is that what you wanna do?
I won't be here.
I will be out of town as well.
You'll be out of town? I'll be here, Mike will be here, but.
Yeah, I'll be here. Yeah.
I don't know about Mary Beth.
She probably will.
Are we talking the 23rd?
Yep.
Yes. That's Thursday, the 23rd. So we usually meet the day before on a Wednesday?
Or Tuesday.
Yeah.
Or Tuesday, doesn't make any difference.
Let's do Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine a, nine AM?
Yes.
Lori's office?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. What about Christmas?
The 28th is fine.
You okay with that?
Yeah, there's no need to change. Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
Did you wanna do, just, do you want a normal meeting or do you want a nine o'clock meeting?
I mean, see, normal meeting's fine.
Okay.
Same year.
Okay.
Yeah, same here, yeah.
Good.
Perfect.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you so much.
So, but it's nine, is nine on the 21st, right?
21st.
Yes.
November.
Yep.
Okay, I will be here for that.
Okay. Moving way along, item 11, accept a $1,600 donation from the Church in the Cape dedicated towards the emergency fuel fund.
So moved.
Second.
That's wonderful. First and a second, Mike?
Aye.
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 Four, zero. Thank you very much. Item 12, accept a $5,000 donation from Allison's Restaurant and dedicated towards the general needs account. Mike?
Aye.
So, so moved.
Second, aye.
Aye.
Four, zero. With much appreciation. Other business, John?
No, sir. I am good.
Just to let everybody know, the Prelude Committee will be out in force this coming weekend and Sunday and Monday, anyway, decorating the town for Prelude, which will be here in a few weeks.
That's what you guys do. That's just wonderful.
When you gonna bring back the Christmas trees?
What? No, 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 no. That was a lot of work. That was a lot of work.
Mike?
I just want Janina to know that I'm in love with this new tablet. I think it's gonna be great for us. I could come in and get a few tips from Dave Powell, but, but I used it tonight, and it's, I like it.
It's common. The computer, tablets, the tablets.
Oh, you got the first one, Mike?
He and, he and Mary Beth both have the tablets, yeah.
Yeah, I used, I used it. It, you know, it's a lot easier traveling with the tablet than a big book.
Well, thank you, Mike, for feedback.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike. Janina?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna say a few words. One, firstly, I wanna thank the board, since I believe this is my last meeting before Lori comes back. I'm very excited for Lori to come back. But thank you to the board for entrusting me in this process. This is very new, but this was, this was a great, great opportunity and chance. And I loved working with the board. It was just amazing. Secondly, I wanna say thank you to everyone who came to election and for their votes. This is so important. This is why we're doing what we're doing. It doesn't matter how you voted, when you voted. The point is that you voted and that you care, and that's all that matters. So thank you, everyone, so much for showing up and, and putting your, yeah, taking time and making your, your choices. And then I wanna say that we will have the volunteer appreciation event, actually, for, for our volunteers. And I just wanna say that we all appreciate our committee members and all the volunteers. They're doing so much work. We counted 130 volunteers for us that helped the town. So we appreciate every single one of them. We actually have much more, many more. We, you know, this is gonna be the first year for us, but we just wanna say thank you to all of them. And we will have appreciation event for them. So that's, that's what I got. Thank you, board.
Well, you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we really appreciate you.
Great job.
Okay, item 14, approve the November 9, 2023 treasurer's warrant.
So moved.
Second.
The first and the second, Mike?
Aye.
Four ayes.
Four ayes.
Move to Jaren?
Second.
Did I?
Oh, come on.
I don't hear a second. The first and the second, all in favor, Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Jaren, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Have a good evening.